This is BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the Town of Branford.
Town of Branford Board of Finance Work Session and Budget Meeting for Monday, March 26, 2018. This is a special meeting. First on the agenda is Citizens Communication. Is anyone from the audience who'd like to address the board? You may do that now. Now, we're going to go to item number two is to hear presentation for fiscal year 17, audit by Bloom Shapiro and Company. And I might note for the audience and the public at home that Victor Casella, our sixth member, is joining us via teleconference tonight, so he'll be listening in and participating as he sees fit. Thank you, Jerry, welcome.
Good evening. We just want to go through the reports with you I got with me. Mike Papam, Mike's the manager on your engagement each year. He's been working on the town audit for a number of years and has a lot of good knowledge related to the town. I'd like to start. You have three reports plus a letter. The letter is a piece of required communication. Our professional standards require that we communicate certain things with you, either verbally or in writing, and we generally choose to do it in writing. This letter talks about certain of the conditions of the audit and the conduct of the audit, dealing with the accounting practices. The letter basically is a boilerplate letter. There are no exceptions identified here. If we had difficulties performing the audit, we would have to notify you. If we had uncorrected or corrected misstatements, we would have to notify you. Disagreements with management. If we used outside other consultations with other independent auditors to do your audit, all of those types of things, we would have to bring it to your attention through this letter. And basically, the letter indicates that there were none of those types of things to bring to your attention. We issued two separate reports, excuse me, on your compliance with state and federal grants. I'm looking first at the state report, state single audit report. The report has identified, let me backtrack, the report would report to you any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or material noncompliance that we found while performing the audits. Both the federal report and the state report have no findings to report to you. I would like to just go through the report a little bit. The state report, if you take a look at pages four and five, you'll see that the town received about $5.6 million in state aid. Most of that is through the education cost sharing grant, about $2.2 million. Another $600,000 in excess cost grants, those are both shown on page five. The audit this year, as in all years, is conducted in accordance with the rules that are put out by the state government and the federal government. In utilizing the guidance that they have in their audit programs, if you look at page nine, there's a list of the programs that we tested for compliance and controls. They are the school-based health clinics, municipal purposes and projects, the town aid road grants, and the child daycare funds. So those were the programs, of all the programs that are listed on page four and five, those are the programs that we actually performed testing on to conclude that there were no problems to report to you. On the federal side, the format of the report is exactly the same. And again, there is no items to report to you. On pages four and five is a listing of, a listing of all of the programs. Most of the programs are programs that are run through your Board of Education. There's about $1.1 million of passed-through grants from the State Department of Education that your Board of Ed runs, and another $500,000 that they run through the Cafeteria Fund. On this side, the rules are a little different for federal grants, and we tested one program that's shown on page nine. We've tested the special education cluster. That cluster is made up of the IDEA-B grants, and basically, there's two different parts to it. There's the grants to states, and there's preschool. But that was the single program that was tested this year for federal compliance. And again, no issues to report to you as far as compliance or controls.
Before we move on, any questions on either the federal or the state grant audits on the board? I'll set the picture up.
The last report that I'd like to go through, and I'm not going to do a page by page, so please stop me at any point, or just ask me your questions at any point. I just want to hit some highlights in terms of the report. The independent auditor's report is on page one. Goes on for three pages. The bottom line is that we have issued our opinions on various opinion units listed on page two, and we have concluded that the financial statements that we have in the report do, in all material respects, present the financial position and the activity of the town in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There was one change in accounting principle during the year. That was the adoption of GASB statement number 74, Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefits. And I'm going to show you the difference that that caused to the report as I flip through the pages of the report. Report format is the same as it's been in years past. The independent auditor's report is first. Management Discussion and Analysis, which is prepared by your finance department, is the next part, and it's followed by the basic financial statements. Exhibit one on page 11 begins the financial statements. This statement shows for all of your governmental activities, a statement of net position, which is your assets minus liabilities, and the result is your net position. Next year, there'll be some changes to this exhibit when we implement GASB 74 that I just referred to. One of the items there is the implementation of other post-employment benefit reporting. The liability associated with that, which is now about $14 million, will end up in the financial statements, whereas it is not in the financial statements currently, it's only in your disclosures. So next year, this statement will change a little bit. Exhibit three is the balance sheet for governmental funds. The headings there are general fund, capital projects, and sewer assessment. Those are what we refer to as major funds, and we give an opinion on each of those funds. In looking at the general fund column down towards the bottom, you'll see that the unassigned general fund fund balance is $20.3 million. That's down about $900,000 from the previous year. Your assigned fund balance of $6.9 million is up significantly from the previous year, and that is due to amounts that were utilized out of fund balance to balance the subsequent year's budget. Exhibit four on page 15 shows the total revenues and expenditures by major category for all of the governmental funds. I think the next thing I'd like to bring to your attention, the pension and OPEB benefit trust funds on page 20 and 21. If you want to see the detail for those broken out between your pension trust funds and the retiree benefit trust fund, you would look back on page 93 and 94 and see the two separate funds that combine to make those amounts on exhibit eight and exhibit nine. The notes to the financial statements are next. There's pretty standard disclosures. Things are unchanged from the previous years, a lot of definitions of the balance sheet, items, detail for receivables, capital assets, significant disclosures on the debt issues of the town and the amortization of the debt amounts going forward, short-term debt, any amounts outstanding for each bond, and no issue. On page 41, we begin with the pension fund disclosures. Several years ago, the pension disclosures changed much the same way that the OPEB disclosures are now changing to be very similar to what you're seeing for pensions. Page 43 shows two pension plans of the town, the police employees and the volunteer fire department. The net pension liability for police is $8.3 million, volunteer is about $350,000. You can see from the percentages there that both plans are about 73% funded. The town also participates in the municipal employee retirement system, which is run by the state of Connecticut. Those disclosures begin on page 48. You have a number of people involved with that plan. Your current liability for those retirees is $10.7 million. Excuse me. And that shows up in a few different places, and I'll show you some charts that are 10-year comparative charts a little later in the report. Oh, thank you so much. The teacher retirement disclosures on page 52 and continuing indicate that the state, although the town has no current proportionate share, as you know, there was much discussion during the state budget preparation this year about having the towns begin contributing a portion of the liability for this teacher plan. Right now, the portion of the liability associated with your teachers that is assumed by the state is $91 million, and that's shown on page 53. The disclosures that I talked about under other post-employment benefits, they begin on page 55. Some of these disclosures have been in your report, but those on page 57 under subsection E are new disclosures. And the net OPEB liability of the town, which is basically your actuarially determined liability minus any assets you have put aside, determine what your net OPEB liability is. That's showing on page 57 of $14.5 million. You are about 50% funded, which is a very positive thing. That liability currently is only disclosed in this footnote. It is not in your financial statements. Beginning next year, that $14 million liability will show up on exhibit one. Page 60 shows the breakdown of your fund balances by fund, by major type, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned. The definitions that associate with each of those categories is in footnote number The next section of the report are required supplemental information. I'm not really going to spend any time with RSI one or two. Those are your budget schedules. We're already three quarters of the way through the next year, so it's probably not too informative for you. Beginning on page 68, however, we have a number of pension schedules that will, over time, show you side-by-side 10 years' worth of data so that you can get and build in your own mind the trend information for each of the plans. So right now, we're only in the, looking at page 68, we're only in the fourth year of implementation of the standard, so we only have four columns, but this will build over time. You'll be able to look at, you know, where your assets are, where the liability is going, and what percentage you are in terms of funding. So those schedules will show for each of your pension plans. There's also a schedule on page 70 that compares the actuarially determined contribution with the actual contributions made. Again, now that part of it, the information was, is readily available, and therefore, we have 10-year tables already built on those names. One of the required disclosures, page 72, is to report out how the annual money-weighted rate of return net of investment expense is for each plan. So here again, it'll tell you in terms of how well is the plan performing in terms of the annual weighted money way of return, money-weighted rate of return. Page 74 shows the teacher pension liability. Again, town portion zero, state portion growing. On page 76 is the municipal employee system. Again, this plan is run by the state, but you have a number of people in it, and you do contribute to this each year. And again, you can see the trend information there. OPEB, page 77, since this standard is just starting this year, there's only one column. There will be a column added each year, and you can see that the format of this is very similar on RSI nine and 10, pages 77 and 78, very similar to the required supplemental information for the pension plans. And the rate of return on page 79 for that plan. Page 80, just a comparative balance sheet for the general fund. Page 81, tax collectors report. Collection rate last year was about 98.3 or 4, somewhere in that range. Beginning on page 84 are all the other funds that the town takes care of that are considered to be special revenue funds. There's a lot of funds between the town and the Board of Education that have their own special sources of revenue, so they are accounted for and reported out separately. Exhibit C1 on page 90 and 91, 92 are your self-insurance funds. You maintain three self-insurance funds, the medical fund, workers' comp, and heart and hypertension. You'll see that your net position in the medical fund is about $13.6 million at the end of the year. Workers' comp, $1.9 million, and heart and hypertension, about $300,000. I previously mentioned, pages 93, 94, the pension trust fund and the retiree benefit trust fund, if you're interested in how much of the assets are broken down between the two funds. And the last schedule of the report is the statement of debt limitation, just a required schedule by the state of Connecticut. Really doesn't tell you too much. The numbers are from a statute that's many, many, many years old, and the limits are quite high.
Thanks, Jerry. Questions from the board on the audit? Charlie?
Again, this year, though, I don't see any findings. I don't see any recommendations, so I think it's, again, very complimentary of our finance department, Jerry.
Charlie, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, when we, you know, when we do up our required disclosures, we're required to report out in writing to you if we determine that there are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, or if in the conduct of the state and federal single audit, if we find material noncompliance with the grants, we do have to report that to you in writing. So as I had indicated before, there was none. There are things that we do verbally talk to in terms of, you know, improvements. That's generally done on a staff level, Mike talking either to the Board of Ed or to the finance department. But we did not issue a, what's also known as a management letter with other less serious corrective action-type things.
Other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I did want to mention one more thing. Many of you I've done presentations to before over the years, this will be my last one. I have officially retired. This is part of my wrap-up campaign here to do the last presentations. We do have a capable partner taking over for me, and Mike, obviously, too, if you so choose to stay with us. But I wanted to thank all of you and thank the staff for their cooperation over the years, and just want to thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Jerry. Good luck in your retirement.
Yeah, good luck, Jerry.
Take care. Thanks, Mike, and Jerry. Next is, agenda item number three is to consider, and if appropriate, approve requests from Public Works for the following transfer: From regular wages and salaries, $43,347 into overtime, $25,526. Into clothing and allowance, $27,15. Into seasonal and part-time, $15,00106. That's the first transfer. Second transfer is from rental equipment, $7,500, to road materials, $7,500. And the third is from road, painting and signs, $12,000. Tree warden expense, $12,000. And the fourth request is from regular wages and salaries, $7,500. Into other purchase services, $7,500. Jerry, how are you?
Good, how are you? Very good, thanks. Public Works requesting following budget transfers, which, by the way, are all within operating budget. So from regular wages and salaries, we're going to put in uniforms and clothing allowance. We had the department-wide upgrade of rain gear, and that kind of put us a little bit behind. Overtime, we have three months left, and we still have a few events to go, so we had some early snowstorms this year, some bad windstorms and everything, so we kind of went over budget with the overtime.
Okay, hopefully, we're through with the snow.
I hope so.
What about the rental and the road materials?
Yeah, that was, road materials, we've got $2,120.68 left, requesting $7,500 just for maintenance of patching and repairing potholes for this quarter coming up to get us through. There's a lot of potholes out there to make the roads safe.
Okay. The third one, the tree warden?
Yeah, we're going to take money from road painting and signs. We had a lot of problem trees, hazard trees, with all the storms that we've had, even going back to that, we had a bad storm in the fall back in October, then we had all these storms recently. We've been really cleaning up a lot of trees around town.
Okay. Any other purchase services of $7,500?
Yeah, this is basically for curb replacement townwide, do the winter plowing, catch basin cleaning per state requirements, and, you know, various emergency projects that will fall out of the scope of the department.
Questions from Jerry? Charlie?
Jerry, if you take $43,000 from regular wages and salaries, so that, heck, would that make you short in that line item for the year? Or you still have enough left to meet?
No, we're fine.
Yeah, no, because you have a vacancy there, which is greater than that, and, you know, also workers' comp, you know, when somebody's out, part of that gets charged for the workers' comp funds. Other questions?
Move it, Jeff. Second?
Moved by Jeff, second by Bob. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Thank you.
Next is to hear requests from the Board of Fire Commissioners regarding their staffing plan. Consider, if appropriate, make a recommendation to the commission with regards to applying for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, aka Safer Grant. Evening, Chief and Commissioner. How are you?
Good, how are you? Just going to, the first document is presentation tonight. We'll be comprehensive, we're busy scheduled tonight, and we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible while we're still trying to allow adequate time for any questions and discussion with the board. The first document, like I said, is the presentation. The remaining documents are some supporting documentation, some documentation of it.
No way to email this to Victor, is there?
We certain Sean could work on that while we talk?
Okay.
For sure.
You still with us, Victor? You still with us, Victor?
I'm with you, Joe.
All right, thank you.
I'm Delai.
Commissioner Massey is, Chairman of the Board is away, but Commissioner Clem is with us tonight, and I can say that Commissioner Clem has been a commissioner longer than I've been a firefighter, so she's well aware of the needs of the department. What we'd like to do tonight, some of you might want to sit over here, because we're gonna take the opportunity to show you on the board behind you how the fire department is currently staffed.
You want to sit over there?
Yeah, if you, if you could, sit over here, or over on the side where you can see, that would probably be more.
I'll sit with you guys.
So, as the, the quote on the board says, "Nobody calls the fire department," and it says, "Send me two firemen in a, in a pickup truck." In three minutes, they want five brain surgeon decathlon champions to come and solve all their problems. And below it, it says, "The expectations of the fire service has changed." While the expectations of the public of the fire service has changed, while we still call ourselves the fire department, our responsibilities are, are great. The, the next slide will show us, you know, this is just a representation of some of the standards and regulations that govern the fire department and how we staff and how we're supposed to staff, but ultimately, a community decides how they're going to provide for fire and rescue services. Branford has, has always supported us, and we appreciate that, but we're at kind of a crossroads, and I, I think what we'll show tonight is, is why we think it's an appropriate time to apply for, for additional funding to staff two more full-time firefighters. One of the things that happened in Branford over the years is in nineteen ninety-one, we took over the emergency medical services of the town. Branford Ambulance was a separate entity at the time, and it was decided, because there was a lot of duplication of efforts, that we would merge the two departments. This, this happened prior to, to my starting with Branford, I started in nineteen ninety-five, but it, it worked very well at the time, there was good balance between the two, but as EMS has become the greater driver of our calls, the fire protection parts kind of fallen off balance, and I think we'll be able to explain that as we move on. So, some of the things that we do as emergency medical service provider today is not just provide an ambulance ride to the hospital, we provide, we basically bring the emergency room from the hospital into the home, we treat people on scene with all the items represented in the photograph or the medications we carry, some of the specialized tools that we carry, such as quick tray kits, endotracheal intubation, we can use a bone drill to access, into osteous access for delivering medications to the vasculature of the bones, and many other things that we have to do. We have a, quite a group of complex patients that can be found at home, variatic patients, patients with special needs. There's longer turnaround times at the hospital these days because of all the specialized stuff that we're due, the greater oversight, the greater amount of documentation that needs to be provided between the hospital and the paramedics, so that it can be reviewed for quality assurance, and just the increased number of, of healthcare facilities and elderly population we have is the larger, is the driver of all of what we do to provide emergency medical services. And we now have five ambulances, as presented earlier in the budget process. Sean, if you could show the next slide. So, everybody knows what the fire department does as far as putting out fires, and, you know, that, we're gonna talk more about what we need to do that as, as we go on the presentation, but these are some of the other services that the department provides. And we provide confined space, rescue services, rope rescue services, marine and water rescue, trench rescue, hazardous materials, collapse, and vehicle and machinery. Each one of these is a specialized group of skill sets that need to be regularly trained on and practiced, but the same group of firefighters are, that we have in town, need to have a lot of this specialized knowledge. And all of these pictures that you see on the screen before you are really our firefighters either actually providing these services or training to provide these services, and the lower left-hand side is an actual rescue from Main Street where we had to simultaneously put water on the fire while rescuing three people from the third-floor walk-up. What is not represented in some of those slides, however, is the, one of the most important things that this department does is the prevention and code enforcement aspect. Code enforcement is, is prevention, and we prevented a lot of incidents over the years by doing, sending our fire marshals into the community and doing their inspections for hundreds of multifamily apartments, multifamily homes, assembly occupancies, healthcare, daycare, educational, and business occupancies. So, that's what we do every day, and here's what, how the incidents have been driven in comparison to our, our staffing. So, this chart starts in the two thousand and two timeframe, and in two thousand and two, we were down in the, in the two thousand call range, and as you can see, as of the end of last year, twenty seventeen, we did five thousand nine hundred and ninety-two calls for service. We had seven firefighters per shift in, in the early two thousands, we went to eight in two thousand and five, we've had eight up until the present year. In fiscal year sixteen, we began the part-time program, which was part of this three-year staffing plan that you have before you that you all had received previously, but I just thought it was important to bring it to your attention, that this would have been the third year of the staffing plan, and the third year really was designed to allow us to take two full-time firefighters off of an ambulance, to put them in a light rescue, and we're gonna discuss the, the plan for that again toward, toward the latter part of the program, but what we've learned over two years of part-time staffing as well, it's, it's met a lot of our goals, it's very difficult to manage that many part-time personnel, and to really fully implement the third year of the plan, we would need that many more people to manage, and with the part-time staff, a lot of these shifts go unfilled, so if you have a shift to fill, but you can't get the people to fill it, it, it doesn't really help us out. Another thing that this chart shows you is the corresponding decline in the number of active volunteer firefighters that we've had during the same period of time. We have had a approximately forty percent decline in the overall number of active volunteer firefighters that we have. Our volunteers are second to none, but they can only do so much. I think one of the things that people need to know about our volunteer firefighters is they're on-call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as they can provide that service. They also are asked to volunteer for every community event in town, from parades to festivals, to fireworks, to everything else, and it, and it does take a lot of their time. The next slide just talks about that Branford is not alone when it comes to the number of volunteer firefighters that we have in the declines. I've provided some information for you, you could read on, again, when you have a, more of an opportunity, it just talks about the challenges nationwide, and Connecticut's no stranger to this trend. So, how does that affect us in, in Branford? This is how Branford currently deploys its resources. The map of Branford has a icon over each one of our station locations, so starting at Company Two, which is the small station on Main Street, Engine Two adds four hundred and seventy-one dispatches per year, I mean, about sixty percent of their non-EMS response, and so they have currently twelve active members at MP Rice. MP Rice is, is our sec, you know, our most, the busiest volunteer company as far as call volume. Next, we move into Short Beach, which is Engine Company Four, and they're dispatched to four hundred and fifty dispatches a year. Now, just keep in mind that a lot of those dispatches are, Company Four's response district goes all the way up to Route One and East Haven Line, and Branford Hills, and all the way east to pass the high school and some of Mill Plain Road, so they have a rather large response district, and, again, they're, they have about thirteen active members currently. We'll move into Stony Creek, and Stony Creek is Engine Company Five, Stony Creek has two hundred and thirty-eight dispatches a year, and they have a twenty-six percent non-EMS response and forty-two percent response with Rescue Five. So, a lot of the calls that they're dispatched to, they cover with the light rescue as opposed to the Engine Company, and they currently have twenty-four active members, they are the largest overall number of members in town. The next station is, is Station Nine. Station Nine, as you, we talked about in the earlier presentation, that we're building the new station for Engine Nine, they, again, between the two units, they have dispatches in the hundreds, they have thirteen active members, and strategically located in the southern central portion of town for a good response from that station. But some of the things that have happened over the years, again, the call volume's gone up, and while a lot of the calls that, that we ask the volunteers to assist with our medical emergencies, that's the largest driver of our, our call volume, but we've, we've lost quite a few volunteer companies over the year, so Pine Orchard Company Six is one of the companies that no longer is a viable company, it's, it's no longer in existence, and we do use the facility to house the antique fire apparatus, and that's really its only function. So, Headquarters is where most of our activity happens, and out of Headquarters was Engine Company Eight, the volunteer company, which closed in two thousand and four, and Aerial Company One, that closed in two thousand and five, so there's three whole volunteer companies that have disbanded just in the last twenty-two and a half years, and at the same time, the overall number of volunteers has, has declined per company. So, this just now gets into the career staff. So, Branford Fire Department is a combination fire department, as you know, career and volunteer. Our career staff is, covers Engine One, Medic One, Medic Two, Car Six, and Rescue One, and it'll be a little bit easier to explain the, how we deploy our, our career staff in the next coming slide, but as you can see, these, each unit is in the eighteen hundreds as far as actual responses, those are, those aren't just dispatches that don't go unanswered, every one of those is an incident that we responded to, somebody's call for help one way or the other. So, our current staffing and deployment is divided up like this, as you can see in the slide here. We have Engine One, which is the only career fire engine, this is the only suppression unit that is staffed by career firefighters. The other, so three, three members are on Engine One, they're led by Deputy Chief in Car Six, who's responsible for townwide operations twenty-four hours a day, and then the, the other four members are divided up into two advanced life support ambulances. The ladder truck, which formerly was volunteer, is no longer staffed by any type of permanent personnel, it's staffed as we have personnel available. And as we move through some slides, we're just gonna show you some of the way that the Branford Fire Department manages our calls. We manage our calls on a one call at a time basis, so depending on what that call is, that's how we will respond to that call. So, for a structured fire during the day where our part-time ambulance is staffed, this is how we are deployed. So, all our firefighters will respond, if everybody's here, we take one paramedic off of Medic One, we put them on the engine, the engine goes out a properly-staffed four-person response vehicle. The other ambulance is left completely unstaffed, left at Headquarters, and those two members take the ladder truck, and that's how we would respond to a structured fire when the part-time ambulance is not available. When that ambulance is available, we would staff, we would have those two members would, would be available for EMS calls. So, you know, after that, after that, after hours, if we were to have a building fire, we basically have no ambulance coverage. In the firehouse, we call in people from outside, so that's how we, we respond to that type of, of staffing. There we go. So, motor vehicle accident or, or a rescue call, outside of having the Medic Three available, this is how we currently staff. Three firefighters are on engine, which is the normal staffing for that engine, two firefighters, and then the deputy, and then that leaves two firefighters to be available for whatever else comes in. Their primary responsibility is the, is the, is the next ambulance, but if a fire call were to come in, they would back, they would ban the, the reserve engine and staff that way. One of the things that was publicly commented, and, and a little bit of a misconception during the presentation for Station Nine, is, you know, that there's thirty-three firefighters here, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and the fact is, is that we have thirty-six career firefighters, including the staff positions, but our normals, because we have to cover a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week shift schedule, there's only eight on duty at any given time, and then the part-timers, and this is how those eight firefighters are, are deployed during those hours. So, one of the things, Sean, if you could just show a marine incident, too, and, so one of the things that the career staff also does along with Stony Creek, is if there is a marine incident, we also staff the boat, and while primarily that responsibility was covered by volunteers in Stony Creek and still is, especially for the Thimble Islands, they are backed up, we just have such a large coastline and so, such a heavy risk for marine incidents, this is the, the staffing model we use. So, when this happens, again, we're, we're dropping an engine, and we're, we have left behind two firefighter paramedics to cover whatever else comes in. The, the important thing to talk about, when you're talking about call volume and how we staff and how we respond, is that these five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six calls don't call, come in one at a time, and they're not planned to come in one at a time. One of the things that happens is that our call volume is, is often overlapping calls, where multiple calls are happening simultaneously, so we'll go, you know, sometimes several hours with not having, turning a wheel at any of the stations or Headquarters, but then all of a sudden, we'll get boom, 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 call after call after call, and we call those overlapping calls. This is a, a report that generates a list of overlapping calls, and out of the five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six calls that we did last year, over three thousand of them were overlapping, or greater than fifty percent of the time, we have two calls happening simultaneously before the other call stops, and it, it's a little bit difficult, but you can look at it, these large highlighted areas are the areas where all of these calls happen simultaneously, so we often do multiple calls, and that's, that's where we start to have a little bit of increased risk, especially when it comes to our EMS call volume. And because the ambulances transport out of town, every time we lose those two full-time ambulances, they're taking two of our firefighter paramedics to the hospital for a minimum of an hour to an hour and a half. So, what do we need to staff for a, a structured fire? So, an average single-family dwelling fire, the initial first alarm assignment is, while these regulations, the National Fire Protection Association seventeen-ten and seventeen-twenty talk about the staffing, just our own experience and common sense in, in how we would respond to these things mirrors these standards. So, we try to comply with the standards, these standards are consensus standards in that they're not the law, they don't tell us we have to do this, but to be, you know, have a safe and effective fire attack, this is what we try to follow. So, this, this is just a single, this, this model is just based on a two thousand square foot Cape Cod house, or any single-family dwelling we have in town, and as you can see, it takes twelve firefighters to actually engage in the firefighting activities, and these things have to happen simultaneously. We have firefighters who stretch the line to put out the fire, we have firefighters to start to search the house for potentially trapped occupants, we have to throw ladders, we have to ventilate the structure, we have to have a backup line, we have a firefighter rescue team standing by in case something happens to us, and we also need an EMS team standing by. And so, all of the support functions, the command function, the pump operator, and the water supply add to that, and the standard is, is that within four minutes of receiving, you know, the travel time from after you receive the alarm, you respond to that alarm and you leave the firehouse, your suppression unit should be on scene with a minimum of four firefighters within the first four minutes, and within eight to nine minutes, all of the rest of these people should be on scene to, to manage the incident. So, that's the, the proper staffing, and while... the proper staffing. And while the good news is, structure fires and, and fires in general are down through our efforts and, and code prevention building and, and all of, all of the like, they still happen, as well as a lot of the earlier-mentioned rescue-type calls that require their manpower-intensive, their skill-intensive. And so we, we really, we really are at the point now where the EMS side of the house has taken over the, to the degree where, while our ambulances are meeting our call volume and we're, we're doing our own transports, it's taking all the resources we have to do that. And there's not a lot of resource left to do the other things that the fire department's called upon to do. And one of the things to keep in mind is, when you call 911, you don't want us at your neighbor's house. So if we're sitting in this firehouse doing nothing, or we're training, or we're doing our skill step, we are doing our jobs. We're here for when you call. And if we're not here, when you call, then that, you know, we're not able to provide the service in a timely fashion. We certainly cover a lot of stuff for mutual aid, but it's not the way to staff a fire department. So what we're gonna talk about is, is the increase in staffing. Like I said, we really started this, it actually started when Chief Ahern and Chief Heffernan presented the, the need back in two thousand and nine. The board did allocate money in the overtime line item for covering a lot of the extra things that, that we have to do. And it, it got us to a certain point. And then we started the three-year staffing plan. We've added the part-timers. And it, it has done its job. And as you're gonna see with the ambulance revenue, you know, we, we put the people in the ambulances, they go meet the needs of the community, and we bill for that. The revenue comes back to us. But that's what we're able to do right now. We're, we're an ambulance service, and we need to, to kind of get back in balance. So one of the things that we, we proposed in the, in the three-year staffing plan was to staff a light rescue truck, which would allow us two additional full-time firefighter paramedics. We hope to do this by staffing the ambulances with more of the part-time model. But again, in the third year of the plan, it gets very cumbersome to have all of those, those part-timers while it's certainly more cost-effective. It presents a lot of other challenges. So the plan is to increase staffing. What, what we did, what we'd like to do is apply for the SAFER grant. The SAFER grant is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Plan. It's a federal grant. It's a three-year grant. Years one and two cover seventy-five percent of the cost. The town covers twenty-five percent. And as you can see, these are the, the budgetary responsibilities. Year three, it goes to thirty-five government, sixty-five Branford. And then our responsibility in our, our budget does go up. Sean, if you could go to the next slide, we'll talk about, we'll talk about the, what the plan is intended to do. So we talked about our responsibilities. We talked about our problems meeting those challenges and all, and all the things that we're able to do. So what this plan would do, it's designed to reduce the frequency that we have so many firefighter paramedics out of town, who's just transporting patients, allowing them to be available for the higher-level type calls and, and the firefighting calls. Our goal is to improve service and increase safety for both the community and the firefighters by reducing injuries. One of the things that we don't do well, and we haven't done well, is with all of these EMS calls, we really only send two people in an ambulance. And a lot of the higher-level calls, from chest pain calls, to difficulty breathing calls, to certainly cardiac arrest seizures, and a lot of those higher-level medical calls, they require more than just two people to make it safe and efficient. And so having these firefighters in the light rescue, they would respond, and we would, we would start to provide a much better care. Prior to combining both ambulance and fire department back in the early nineties, we did provide more of a first responder for the higher-level calls along with the ambulance. And then we ended up, just because we didn't have enough people to constantly run that engine on every medical call, we started to back that off to just the cardiac arrest calls and the unconscious calls and the seizure calls. But we're doing a disservice by not providing the care with the appropriate amount of people at the home for these higher-level medical calls. And then you don't need that many people, the ambulance transports, and that, that unit can be available. So having that unit, you know, part of it is lifting, carrying, and moving all the stuff we have to carry now. So the idea is that we would also reduce some of these injuries that we were, unfortunately, one of the more frequent departments to have people out for back pain and, you know, that type of muscular and skeletal injuries. So we hopefully also reduce the need for the only career fire engine. I explained earlier that we have one career fire engine, one staffed fire engine. That's been that way since the career staff pretty much started. There's been one career fire engine. But it's out doing a lot of medicals now. So if we could reduce the amount of time that engine's doing medicals, it's more available to do the fire. It's not as, responding to as many emergencies, reduce wear and tear on the big expensive piece of apparatus. And then the, having these, again, more firefighters on shift increases the likelihood that the town's only ladder truck will, will get out when we need it. And the overall goal of improving response time and reliability. And then there is also the potential to increase revenue by not having to pass calls. We, we've reduced that greatly with the part-time staffing we currently have, but we're still passing a small percentage of the calls. And what we have always done is, if that next ambulance call is the call that we have to do, we'll take staff from upstairs. We'll put them in an ambulance. We'll take this staff from this. We'll move them there, and they'll go and do that medical call. So here's just a little bit, and you've all seen this before, but I think it's important to talk about the revenue. The revenue, as you can see, has been pretty much on par with what we base the revenue income for taxation. So you give us a target based on historicals. We try to be a little conservative because we've taxed on it. So we wanna make sure that, you know, we hit that number. And so we always have been slightly above it. But as you can see, once we started answering all these EMS calls we did, that revenue went way above the target. So this year, you know, we, we periodically will be asked to increase that, that goal. And in this year's budget, it would increase ninety-thousand over last year's budget. And I think we're even gonna do better than, than last year. So that's a little bit of what I meant during the budget presentation, as, you know, the money's already coming in the door this side. At, at some point, it's gonna flatten out until call volume goes up again significantly. But right now, this is what we're faced with. A ton of EMS calls. We're doing them. We're, we're in the ambulances. We're getting them done. But we're, we're not doing a lot of the other stuff that we're supposed to be doing. A little bit about the budget offset and how the ambulance revenue offsets the cost of this department as far as the operating budget is concerned. This just really does show the operating budget. But over a six-year period, when you apply the additional ambulance revenue above taxation, any additional money we've been asked to make, and compare that to the previous year's budget, in the last six years, we've had about a point-two-percent cost year-to-year increase to the, to the taxpayer. So we're, we're happy we're able to subsidize to a great extent the cost of providing the service that we provide. So this is, this was the original budget proposal that we had caught, came in with to, to spark the conversation about the increased staffing. And as you can see, it covers all of the, all of the increases in the operating side of the budget. It would have left us with an overall thirteen percent increase in the over, you know, in our budget with a, I think it was a thirteen percent in the salaries, but overall, it was a nine-point-six percent increase in the overall budget. And this was the cost of hiring those additional eight-time, full-time firefighter personnel. And so the difference between what we ended up asking for to stay more in line with the three-year part-time staffing plan is about one hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars. What this doesn't show, and it doesn't come out of my budget, is the expenses on the benefit side. And so, Jim, help me out, but I think it's in the neighborhood of thirty-two thousand per, per employee for the fire department for benefit and, and...
Yeah, it's, it's way back. You'd be a little higher to take the open, but yeah, it'll be higher than that.
Little bit higher than that. So, so that's the part that it doesn't show. Probably another three hundred thousand dollars per firefighter, you know, to, that would be added to the budget that is not presented as far as my operating budget. But certainly want to, you know, in full disclosure, that this is not, there's more to the cost of full-timers. And I know you guys understand that, but for the benefit of the public. So because we know that adding firefighters is expensive, we, we feel that if, if we can get the town to wrap their head around the need and, and agree with the need for this, that the opportunity to take advantage of the opportunity to apply for the SAFER grant, of course, no guarantee that we would receive it where it's a competitive grant. We'll certainly give it our, our all. But that's what we're asking the board to allow us to do. Just a little bit about what it won't do. It's not designed to replace or phase out any needs of our dedicated volunteers. It's not gonna close any fire stations, and it's not gonna increase any response times. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thanks, Chief. Step back up here.
Kind of been a little more than a nutshell.
Thanks, Chief, for the presentation. Do we have questions on the presentation at this time? Charlie?
Chief, on the current eight, eight people every day, you know, on the shift, are they all paramedics?
The majority of them are paramedics. We still have a few people that were before, before we required everybody to be a paramedic. The requirement for everybody to be a paramedic came in, in, I believe it was nine, in the ninety-four timeframe, ninety-three. It was part of the merger.
So eventually, will those that are still EMSs or...
Right. So everybody's a minimum of an EMT, which is a basic, a basic, you know, provider of emergency care. However, you know, in the future, as staffing increases in the fire department, there is the opportunity to not have, have to have everybody be a paramedic. While it's, it's desirable, it's also very expensive to have everybody be a paramedic. So the, the goal would be to maybe reduce the number of paramedics necessary. But right now, because of our community and the, and the way we operate, having that, those paramedics on staff makes things a lot easier.
A couple. Is the SAFER grant for eight or nothing, or can you apply for one or two or three?
So that's, that's a great question. So the SAFER grant is, is a competitive grant that's designed to make, and, and the goal of the grant is to make you that much more effective in meeting the standard of NFPA seventeen-ten, which is the deployment of proper resources for firefighting and emergency services. While you can't apply for any number of firefighters, the likelihood, because it's competitive, they're gonna look and say, how much more is it going to help Branford by giving them one personnel as opposed to the, the request that, that we would be asking for, which would be, which would be eight, but it's two firefighters per shift?
Okay.
So this allows us to do is put that additional unit on the road. If we have one firefighter, one additional firefighter, well, it's going to be a help to the fire department. It's, we're, we're not able to put one person in a unit and send them out by themselves. It's not a safe way to deploy your resources. Firefighters operate as, as a team-based group of people. And allowing that extra unit to be on the road will meet all those goals and keep the, the fire engine more available. It's still gonna be on, going on medicals, believe me, but it's not gonna go on as many if we, if we staff the light rescue truck.
If you were to get these eight new firefighters, is the plan or the rejection on cost to include them training to be a paramedic?
What we would do is, as we have in the past, we endeavor to hire people who have already been through the training. When that's not appropriate, we hire, in limited amounts, those who we will send to paramedic school. And so those costs are in the, other line items are kind of already there. We would have to manage that to be, we wouldn't hire eight non-firefighter paramedics and send them all to school at once. That would, that would not be an efficient way to do things. But we would probably send a portion of them. And that...
Right. So you think there are some EMTs around available? Should you get the SAFER grant that our fire department could hire?
Yes. Yes. And, and so what we're, what we're always doing, we, we got involved in what's called the Connecticut Consortium, which is a group of departments that came together to test and, and hire and recruit. It's given us a, a much wider reach while we're competing with these other fire departments. You know, we, we've been fairly successful in retaining people. One of the, the nice things about being a firefighter paramedic in the town of Branford is, you know, you, you're responsible for a wide range of things. You don't just do one job. You know, being a paramedic, you're a rescue technician, you're a firefighter, and we do send you to school. And, and, you know, we expect a lot of the people that we have here.
Listen, when you did your budget presentation, as I recall, to increase the staffing on the ambulances, there was a, there was an increase of about three hundred and four thousand, five hundred, something like that?
Yep.
Okay. And what, what is the new increase? I, you know, I haven't had a chance to look it over.
So to, the increase that we asked for in this year's budget request gives us a greater coverage of the part-time hours, and it also increases that single firefighter that we staff in, in the light rescue truck that we, you know, during the daytime, we don't mind putting one people, person, and that's what we can do. So it has been making our calls more efficient, and our turnaround time better. But if we were to hire the eight, this year's request would be absorbed into that. So it wouldn't be in addition to. It would be this year's request, and then the difference, which if you, I had it up there, it's, it, just on the operating side, it's, it's in the neighborhood of a hundred and six, seventy-six thousand dollar difference in just the operating side costs. And then there's the benefit costs that we talked about.
So I'm a little confused. Like, you asked for a three hundred and forty thousand five hundred more. What would be the incremental cost to add eight more?
Difference between this page and what he's asked for.
Yeah. So if you look on, Sean's gonna look at it right now.
Page eighteen.
Eighteen. So that's, that's the cost of adding, 'cause we're, these are new firefighters. They're being paid at the seventy percent salary rate with their associated benef, you know, replacement benefit costs, which are on these other line items. So they're going to cost, on top of the three hundred thousand, they would be a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar more just in the salary line items. And then we would have to pay their benefits as well.
That's only, that's only the first year, though, in the, we, we only covered, what, twenty-five percent?
Well, you're budgeting a hundred percent.
Yeah, this is a hundred percent in the budget.
Hundred percent.
So what this points to is, we probably have a lot more questions than we need to be able to get into tonight. Okay?
Yep.
Because we're starting, I think we have, all have a lot of questions. And there's a lot of detail that we may wanna see in addition to this. So what we're suggesting here tonight is a good presentation, good opener. I think we have a lot of questions, as I pointed out. We can ask a few more tonight. But what my thinking is, is that we, we come back for a special meeting just to really spend more time in advance of your timeframe to apply for the grant, which I believe is in the April.
So, and, and so what we can do, the, the grant actually opened today. It closes April twenty-seventh. That's, that's what it has to, that's the deadline for submission. And we can, you know, we can work on the grant. We can do everything we need to do. We can be ready to push the submit button prior to that, should the board agree. So it's not going to, you know, we just have to be ready to do that by the twenty-seventh.
That's fine. We can work in parallel on this. I think that's fair. Question, Bob, do you have one I, or Lorraine or Jeff in?
I'll, I'll hold on. I'd like a recommendation. We have a special meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So, so there's a recommendation. That's a formal motion.
Sure.
And you have a motion?
Just a second.
No, he's second. Okay. I know, but I'm taking a motion right now. So discussion on the motion. All in favor?
All right.
I don't necessarily need to take questions from the field, but you are who, sir?
Mark Riccio from the RTM.
Wanna come up?
Can I speak? So obviously, this will probably come to us eventually, potentially, I would think, right, to the RTM?
That's correct.
So, couple of questions. I should know this question. How many personnel do you have right now?
There are thirty-six paid firefighters. Four of those are staff, including one... There are thirty-six paid firefighters, four of those are staff, including myself and Chief Heffernan. So we have a, we have a fire prevention inspector, we have a deputy chief who's in charge primarily of training and administering all the training requirements and record keeping, and we also have fire marshals, Chief Heffernan, who's my assistant chief and myself. The remaining career staff is, is divided into four shifts to cover the twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and they are, that makes eight per shift.
By the way, it was a very great presentation, thank you for sharing that stuff. So you're looking for basically a twenty-five percent increase?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm looking at the cost, looking at the cost benefit. How many people are dying and how many fires are we not putting out because we don't have the, maybe the staff requirements that you have today?
So that's.
It's a simple question, but probably a hard answer.
It is a hard answer because the, the truth is, is that no matter how stretched we are, we find a way to answer the call, it's just whether we can answer that call in a timely fashion or not. And so while I'm not prepared to answer statistics about how many people may have died, we all know that fires are down, but they still occur. And we do get to some times where we're extremely thin. My job is to try to ask for the resources necessary before we're not able to answer those calls, and that's kind of.
Because I'm looking for empirical data.
Sure. It's very difficult.
We're going to get a presentation to the board, this is not.
I understand. We'll have an opportunity to ask those questions, but I'm just, you know, just asking some general questions.
I understand. So we'll get that information, we'll deal with that at our special meeting.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions with regard to the presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is to consider, if appropriate, approve requests and transfers from finance director? Have we seen anything?
Yeah, actually, I have a letter in the package.
Got it. Okay, so this is two transfer questions, you want to go over these?
Yeah, I will, sure. The first one is, I just want to make sure some of the copies are the type of one, it's twenty-two hundred from contingency and then twenty-two hundred to the equipment account. This is Willby Wallace Library, you may recall in her presentation, she talked about the need to fund a defibrillator at the library, so if, if we were to approve this transfer out of contingency, the contingency balance after this transfer would be seven twenty-seven, seven oh nine. So if we were to fund this transfer out of contingency, that would be a request you can reduce in next year's budget.
Okay. Questions on this? Somebody want to move?
I'll move it, Joe.
They're moved seconded by Charlie, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, next.
The other one was a topic we discussed a couple of times, one, when the actuary was here and we were talking about changing the rate of return assumptions down to six and a half percent, that resulted in a increase in the annual contribution. At the last meeting when we talked about budget considerations, one of the things I suggested was that we take a million dollars that, that was previously earmarked for the TRB and use that to reduce the liability in the police pension plan. You may recall that it improved the funding ratio, but more importantly, as related to the budget, it actually reduced the contribution by about eighty-one thousand dollars per year. And so that, that would allow you to, to make that change for next year's budget if you were to approve this transfer.
Okay, questions on this, Jim?
I'll move it, I'll second.
Moved in second, a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay, next on our agenda is a budget work session. So before we get started on this, I just want to do a recap. Again, we've had budget requests, we've conducted our public hearings, and we've had budget requests of one hundred and thirteen million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, which represents a million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars above the current budget. The net to be raised from taxation as proposed was a hundred million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight seventy-two, representing a mil rate of twenty-eight point eight eight, which was four tenths, four hundred basis points increase of the mil rate, or a one point four percent increase. The board, as you know, the board has conducted its public hearings, we've had other meetings and studied it ourselves and worked with the finance department, we've come up with some suggested changes to that budget, and we will walk through each budget and all the capital items and then make a final recommendation to the RTM tonight. With that ordinarily, unless the board would rather we do something different, we'll start with the Board of Ed, both operating and capital, and that budget is on page fifty-five. There is a suggestion number of reduction of a hundred and nine thousand, portion of that is to fund medical claims at a hundred percent, and I think that represents about forty-four thousand dollars, and the balance is a balancing number that I believe comes out to about a ten percent of the request, if I'm not mistaken. Comments on this budget? Somebody want to move it?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jim, you have that number of total Board of Ed budget, I believe is fifty-six million, seven seventy-nine, two twenty-three.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to Board of Ed capital. Okay, yep, Board of Ed capital, couple of changes on equipment and services, there was a request for fifteen thousand for equipment, that's suggested numbers to reduce that to seventy-five hundred. I'll go through the other changes unless somebody wants to go independently. I believe on the infrastructure, building code, compliance, reduction from twenty-five thousand to fifteen thousand. They would put the total Board of Ed capital at nine hundred and fifty thousand, six twenty. Correct? Somebody want to move that?
I'll move that.
Second.
Seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that takes care of the Board of Ed for now, and we will start now at the top of the budget, which is on page ten. Legislative, no suggested changes, request eighteen thousand, one forty.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Been moved and seconded by Jeff, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is executive, no suggested changes, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight thirty-four.
So who?
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Board of Finance, recommended change to add six thousand dollars, I believe, to the actuarial services. So that would be a total of ninety-one thousand, six oh three for total budget?
I'll move it.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Been moved, seconded by Charlie, all in, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is fiscal services. We had, don't have a number here, but we had recommended that, or to consider to increase regular wages and salaries. I believe that has a two point five percent increase in there, Jim, is that correct?
Yes.
For your.
Yep.
So Catherine, you're going to have to give me a number, or somebody, what the discussion at the, informal discussion was to increase our finance director's salary by three and a half percent instead of two and a half percent, but I don't have that Somebody is working on that number? Would that be forty-four ten? Your grandfather would have done it in his head.
I know, I saw him.
He would have yelled at me too.
Tom, when you have.
I think it's forty-four fifty-two.
Forty-four fifty-two?
For, for total increase, not thirty-one eighty, forty-one fifty-two, so it's a difference of, minus forty-four fifty-two, twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Plus twelve seventy-two. Plus twelve seventy-two.
That would make the department total four forty-nine, seven fourteen.
Four forty-nine, what is it? Seven fourteen.
Seven fourteen.
Okay, somebody want to move that?
I'll move that.
Been moved, seconded by Lorraine, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is assessor, no recommended changes, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four oh four.
I'll move it.
Been moved and seconded by Bob, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Board of Assessment Appeals, thirteen thousand, three forty-nine, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Tax Department, original request of five fifty-eight, three oh eight, recommended reduction of a hundred and forty thousand on the tax refunds, refund line item, making that line item two hundred thousand dollars, that would make the total budget at four...
Four eighteen, three oh eight.
Four eighteen, three oh eight, thanks, Jim. Somebody want to move it?
I'll move it.
Bob's moved it, Jeff seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Town Clerk, no, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven forty-eight, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, second.
Been moved, seconded by Charlie, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is Legal Services, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Charlie, seconded by Bob, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is Labor Relations, sixty-two thousand, five hundred, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And for the audience as well, Victor is on the, on the line, as I mentioned, he would be chiming in if he disagreed, that was the arrangement, instead of voting on every single one, so.
That's correct, Joe.
Thank you, Victor, just checking in with you.
Still waiting.
Next is Probate Court, twelve thousand, five fifty, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Elections, hundred and sixty-five thousand, five ninety-two, no recommended changes.
So who?
Moved by Bob.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Planning and Zoning, three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by.
Second.
Bob, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, eight thousand, eight seventy-seven, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Lorraine, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Economic Development, fifteen thousand, one eighty-five, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next in Wetlands, hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eighty-six dollars, no recommended changes.
So who?
Been moved by, by Bob?
Yep.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Municipal Buildings, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, one seventy-eight, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Been moved by Jeff, seconded by Charlie, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is, is Branford Cable Television, seven thousand, two hundred dollars, no recommended changes.
So who?
Been moved by Bob, seconded by Lorraine, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is IT Budget, Information Technology, have a couple of suggested changes here, reduce hardware by a thousand dollars to forty-one thousand, eighty, sixty, eight eighty-six, and the reason for that is, there's going to be a corresponding reduction in the question of the police department for a fifth car.
Sixth car.
Sixth car, okay. And technology acquisitions likewise, reduction of eighteen thousand, six twenty-five, can I have that total budget?
Yes, it's seven ninety-nine, six thirty.
Seven ninety-nine, six thirty. Thanks, it's probably somewhere here.
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Human Resources, no recommended changes, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars, somebody want to move it?
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Jeff, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next on Public Safety, Police Request of six hundred, six million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three ninety-nine, suggested reduction of regular wages and salaries by sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, which represents reducing the funding for Captain to twenty-five percent of the year. That total budget would be at five.
Six million.
Six million, six million, three hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Correct.
So anyone want to move it? Discussion on this at all? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Fire.
No special detail, Joe.
Next is Special Detail.
Page thirty-two.
Why do I always skip that?
I don't know.
It's one of my favorites. I can't find it.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Okay. Okay, 525,000, no recommended changes. Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fire Services, operating request of 6,4226. Recommended change of moving 300, I'm sorry, reduction of 304,686, which represents the increased request on the medic shift.
And part timers.
Part timers, thank you. And that's again contemplating further discussion. There is a corresponding add back in the contingency of 90% of that number. Again, that was, uh, I think that's still appropriate. Again, looking to have further discussions with regards to the staffing. So before I move this, um, the procedurally, if in fact, uh, we move it to contingency, it could get moved back out by us, or it could be moved out by, conceivably by the RTM, if that, if that makes sense during their budget deliberations.
Yes, it could be moved by the RTM, yes.
Correct. So, um, that if, that, why don't we just vote on that line item for this one? Because it is a, I think we understand what it's doing, but as long as the board is in unison on it. So that line item would be 252,442.
So moved.
Moved by Bob.
What's the bottom number then?
I'm gonna get to the bottom number, I'd like to vote on that line item.
Oh, fine. I'll second it, Joe.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So now that Charlie's bottom line on that, um, that number would be 5,699,540. So it's 5,699,540.
Now I can move it.
Okay, Charlie's moving it, seconded by Bob, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Building Inspection and Enforcement, 182,445, no recommended changes.
So moved.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Animal Control, transfer out to the Fund of 104,916, no recommended changes. Moved and seconded by Lorraine, discussion? All in favor? We have Public Works. Recommended change to add 9,000 to Streetlights. Make that line item 356,000. Dollars, and total budget on that would be 2,492,700. Somebody wanna move it?
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Water Pollution Control, again, transfer out of 600,000, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved and seconded by Charlie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Solid Waste Management, request of 3,138,43. We're looking to increase that Material Handling line item by 24,000 to handle co-mingled containers and the Preston issue, I guess. That line item would be 1,281,78. It would bring the, the total budget to 3,162,43. Moved by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Engineering, no recommended changes. Total request, 360,424.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next budget is Transfer Out for Human Services, 1,49,432. No, no recommended changes. Moved by Bob. Seconded by-
Jeff.
Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Elderly Services, 415,494, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is East Shore District Health Department, request of 250,942, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff. Seconded by Lorraine, the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Recreation Department. Request of 1,145,77, no recommended changes.
So moved.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor? Next is Young's Park Commission. Request of 9,415, no recommended changes.
I'll move that. Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Parks and Open Space, transfer out to the Open Space Fund, 26,800, no recommended changes. Been moved by Bob. Seconded, seconded by Lorraine, discussion? All in favor? Next budget is Stocks and Recreational Facilities, request of 17,952, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Seconded by Bob, moved by Charlie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public Celebration, 29,68, no recommended changes. Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Conservation and Environment Budget, 4,464, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is James Blackstone Memorial Library, request of 1,418,46, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Willoughby Wallace Library. We have a few recommended changes that would increase the library staff by 1,349 because they forgot to put in their 2% increase. Reduction of other supplies by 2,200, because that was getting funded in the current year. We've, part of our transfer tonight. And library automation, due to Comcast, that 617 dollar increase. So those line items would be, would be adjusted as I described. And the total budget would be 235,323, correct?
Yes. I'll move it.
Been moved by Charlie.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lorraine, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Debt Service Principal, request of 6,736, 625.
I'll move it, Joe.
No, no recommended changes, moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, next is Interest for Debt Service, 1,538,348, no recommended changes.
So moved.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Pensions and Contributions, request of 4,684,318. Suggesting a couple of changes there, one would be reduced volunteer stipend by 15,000. To 75,000. And, uh, reduction of the Police Pension Fund by 81,000 to 1,080,60. That particular change is due to the fact that we're moving a million dollars. We're recommending moving a million dollars into that fund to, uh, to decrease the unfunded liability by that same amount, which then decreases the annual contribution requirement. That, um, budget would be...
4,588,308.
Thanks, Jim. 4,588,308 is the, is the new revised budget recommendation.
So moved.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Employee Group Insurance, request of 7,43,654. Recommending a reduction of 240,000 on the Health Insurance Premium Line Item to make that line item 6,8,654. Again, to, uh, fund 100% of Medicare, medical claims, similar to what we did on the Board of Ed side as well. So that budget would be, um, let me just check that budget, Bob. That budget would be 6,803,654.
I'll second it.
And moved by Bob, that's the one you moved? And, um, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor? With regards to Municipal Insurance, request of 2,346,451, no recommended changes.
Move it. Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Contingency, and that, uh, would change by adding 300, sorry, 274,217 as, as, uh, to accommodate 90% of the paramedic part-time line item that we reduced. That budget would now be 1,351,171.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by-
Yep.
Charlie, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the capital items for the town.
Can I do open screen?
Uh, we'll move, we'll go to those other funds after the capital. So, um...
What page are you on?
I'm at page 70, which is actually, um, gonna be of the handout. The handout, page 70. So, um, for Equipment and Services, we have three recommended changes. One would be to, um, Radio Upgrade Syncing Fund, reduce that to 155,000 from the request of 70, 175,000. Next, we would reduce the Police Cruisers from, request from 160,000 to 128,000. And that funds, remind me, that funds five? Four?
Four.
That's what I thought, okay, four. Likewise, um, the related equipment, reduce that from 102,765 to 82,212. So for, and we'll vote for the total on this if you like, but for now, the subtotal is 2,922,312 for total Equipment and Services. Next on the Generators, we, um, are recommending not funding those for this fiscal year, pushing them out for consideration into next year, so that we reduce that from the Animal Shelter Generator from 46,000 to zero, and for the Counseling Center from 50,000 to zero. Again, pushing those out until 2020 for consideration. And, uh, next change would be, that actually is the, uh, the total for other requests, other changes, so that, that municipal, is that the number on the page should be 5,723,12, which is the town's portion of the capital items. So there's a... I believe that's the correct number, Jim, 5,723,12?
Well, yeah, actually, your only, the part you're taxing for, uh, is really that top line, so it's the-
The 2,149. Got it, okay, so, um...
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved 2,149,312 by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And again, any of these other items that are being recommended are funded by other Debt Service and other, and other areas grants, and so any of the Debt Service appropriations would come back to this board at a later date. So with that, we'll move back to, um, the other funds on page 61.
You just have the two lease fund items, so, we have a general fund.
Those are where, Jim? Those are, what page is that on?
If you go to page 60, uh, you'll see two items towards the, uh, lower 20%. 148,000 for the Lease Fund Town, and 85,000 for the Lease Fund fee.
Board of Ed.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So again, that would bring the, that includes all the capital items, including the Board of Eds. But, uh, but that's really, those, those numbers have changed, so this is the, the 148 and the 85 will cover and tie into the rest of the numbers.
You wanna do the total?
No. So, um, the Open Space on page 61, we have, uh, total expenditures of 59,283, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Charlie, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Board of Ed Special Funds, Adult Education, total requested 60,000, no recommended changes. It's moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is School Age, Child Care, budget is 665,250, no recommended changes.
Move it.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by-
Jeff.
By Jeff, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Next is Sewer Assessment Fund, 167,904, no recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff.
Second, Joe.
Seconded by Charlie, discussion? All in favor? Next is Sewer Utility Fund, 4,384,295, no recommended changes.
Move it. How about the Water Assessment Fund?
Uh, there's nothing there. That number, Lisa, for this Sewer Utility Fund is 4,384,295. And I lost track. Did somebody move this one?
I will.
Charlie moved it, Jeff seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Animal Control.
Next is Animal Control Fund, $291,459, no recommended changes.
So move.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And next budget is Human Services Fund, no recommended changes. Request of $1,518,432.
I'll move it.
Been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's it, unless we wanna start over again. What we'll do is we will take a five-minute break and just recalculate and make sure we've got the numbers correctly, and come back with our final motions for the evening. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna wrap up our workshop with resolutions based on previous actions of the board this evening. So the first one is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $57,262,843,000 to the Board of Education, operating budget plus capital for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
I'll move that.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $54,924,109 for all other town departments for fiscal year 2018, 19.
So move.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, resolved that the Board of Finance hereby passes the following budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019. Board of Ed Education operating budget, $56,247,47. Board of Ed Special Education, $754,476. Board of Education capital leases, $484,620. Subtotal Board of Ed, $57,262,843. Town Departments, $54,924,109, for a total of $112,186,952.
So move.
Been moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $59,283 to the Open Space Fund budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $167,904 to the Sewer Assessment Fund budget for fiscal 2018, 2019.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $60,000 to the Board of Education Special Fund budget for fiscal 2018, 19.
So move.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $665,250 to the Board of Education Daycare Fund budget for fiscal 2018, 19.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $4,384,295 to the Waste Water Treatment Plant budget for fiscal 2018, 2019.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff.
Charlie.
Seconded by, seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $291,459 to the Animal Control Fund budget for fiscal 2018, 19.
So move.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $1,518,432 to the Human Services Special Revenue Fund budget for fiscal 2018, 2019.
So move.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM a salary increase of 2.5% for the Register of Voters for each of their two-year term of office.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So as a recap, the budget as approved to, and recommended to the RTM is $112,000, $112,186,952. Increase of, over the current year budget of $373,000, $373,977, which is 3/10ths of 1% increase. Estimated revenues at this point is $12,697,502, with an estimated net to be raised from taxation of $99,489,450. Estimated grand list of $3.551 billion, equating to an estimated budget of 28.67 mils, 20 basis points increase, or 7/10ths of 1%. And as we know, the RTM will act on this budget. They can move around line items, they can decrease the budget, they cannot increase it. And that finalized budget expenditures will come back to the Board of Finance in May. We will validate and, and solidify the revenues, and then set the mil rate officially at that meeting. So with that, that finishes our work for tonight and our budget, budget deliberations. We would like to thank Jim and Catherine and Lisa and Jamie from the Town Hall and the Suckman's Office and Finance Department and Town Clerk. Jamie, you have anything you'd like to say?
Joe, I just thank you and the board for, once again, for your thoughtful consideration and recommendations for the budget. This budget upholds our mission of really investing in our infrastructure, funding our future liabilities, and providing programs and services for the residents of Branford. You know, with that said, you know, we focus on this time of year as the budget, budget season. However, as I said in the past, you know, the town staff and myself and working closely with the Finance Department, Jim Finch and Catherine, really look to maintain, manage the budget throughout the year, but also look for efficiencies and ways to reduce the taxpayer burden. As demonstrated last meeting, where we had a couple of presentations looking at options to further control growing costs. I look forward to coming before this board in the near future as we present and discuss some other options. But I just, as we go forward to, in the next couple of months, with the RTM, and essentially further reviewing this budget. But thank you for your time and effort.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you. Any comments or final comments from the board? If not, with?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The preceding program was brought to you through the support of the Town of Branford.